You know at Rotary you have to put five bucks in the.
I used to be in Rotary.
Did you quit because?
But I couldn't afford it.
It amazes me because it happens to the same guy over and over and over.
Are we ready? It's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll also be meeting at 9:15 is Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Both meetings following the Open Meetings Act is amended and a copy of which is posted at the end of the room. The board does have the right to go into executive session at any time to discuss an item on the agenda and may take items out of order for the convenience of those in the public. Having said that, our first order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Wohler, please.
Join me, please. Father God, as we gather today, we are reminded and grateful of the many hands that serve this community of Lincoln County. We ask for your blessings and protections for our law enforcement, first responders, and military members as they perform their duties at home and abroad. As fall harvest begins, we pray for the safety of our ag partners and all of us who share the roadways with them. While our blessings are abundant, let us -- our considerations today also extend to those who are less fortunate. Lord, we ask for the comfort and peace and strength for those suffering with illness. Keep them and their loved ones in the folds of your care. In Jesus' name we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Commissioners' meeting held September 16, Lake Lionport. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve those minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on September 16, 2024.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Tammy?
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wohler?
Aye.
Burns?
Abstain.
Hughley?
Aye.
Next item is Claims and Treasurers Receipts as presented. I think we had a copy of those. I would entertain a motion if you're so inclined.
Chairman, I'd move that we approve the Claims and Treasurers Receipts as presented.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion. Roll call, please. Tammy?
Burns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wohler?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
How'd you do on your book list over the weekend? You get some progress made?
I was able to finish three, so we can call that a pretty good weekend.
That is a power reader.
Yeah. But one is all I have to do after work besides feed a cat.
Is your cat plumpy?
No, he comes around enough. I want him to get a little chubby so he can stop jumping on top of my cabinets.
Have you seen those videos where they put sheets of tin foil on top of their cabinets and the cat goes to jump up there and bounces like 10 feet the other way?
Yeah, and I tried that, but he is determined.
Didn't work.
Joe, you're about out of ink, if you hadn't noticed. Yep. He did try to get every last little prop, though.
Didn't you just get one of those last week?
Yeah, this might be it. Hopefully I didn't put her down. I don't know. I could have gone through one that quick either that or somebody else.
At least tell me it's fifth head.
Well, look, next time, maybe Tammy is giving me only quarter filled cartridges. Yeah, that's how I do it. Jerry, I talked to one of you employees on the prey rodent thing this past weekend. Said he eats so many. It was kind of a problem. I told her card lessons were cheaper. It reminds me of how many people you actually count. It's a different one than I figured. So this would be various last week. Tammy?
Yes.
The first. Thank you. Nicole, this is the end of payroll.
Yeah, I like that name.
It's 9:15. Our next -- we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convene as Lincoln County Board of Equalization again following the Open Meetings Act, copy of which is posted at the end of the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on September 16, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the meetings minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on September 16, 2024.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Tammy?
Wohler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Burns?
Abstain.
Hughley?
Aye.
Next item are the certificates of correctional refund submitted by the county assessor. I don't -- nothing?
None.
Wouldn't see any. Motor vehicle tax application exemption application submitted by the county treasurer for the First Nazarene Church. And also I think we might have some over there for Great Plains.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption, Form 457, for the First Church of the Nazarene at 1802 North Jeffers in North Platte for a 1999 Ford van. It'll be used for religious purposes and the transportation of congregation to and from church events. It has been reviewed and approved by Lincoln County Treasurer Alex Garchulo. It is my motion that we also approve the application.
Second.
The motion is second. To approve, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wohler?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
No, it's an agenda item.
Yeah, it -- Motor vehicle exemption application submitted by the county treasurer for Great Plains Health, please.
Question I would have for the county treasurer. There's four of them stapled together. Are they all considered one? Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have an application, four pages, Form 457 from Great Plains Health for several vehicles, and I will list them out. There is a 2005 Platinum Utility Trailer, a 2020 Honda Odyssey, a 2021 Ford Transit Van, a 2002 H&amp;H Utility Trailer, a 2004 Ford E350 Econo Van, a 2001 Ford Van, 1999 Chevy Pickup, a 2023 Nissan Rogue, another 2023 Nissan Rogue, and a third 2023 Nissan Rogue, all having separate VIN numbers, a 2024 Honda Van, a 2016 Ford Escape SE, a 2012 Dodge Grand Van, a 2004 GMC K2500 three-quarter ton, a 2008 Ford F-250, a 2023 Dump PG Trailer, a 2002 United Utility Trailer, a 2017 Ford Super Duty, a 2004 Ford E350 Econo Van, a 2015 Honda Odyssey Van. All of these have been reviewed and recommended for approval by the county treasurer. Would be my motion that the board aligns with the treasurer's recommendation and approves this application in whole.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Burns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wohler?
Aye.
Aye. The other -- nothing else to come before the Board of Equalization. We will adjourn as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as Lincoln County Commissioners at 9:20.
I'm pretty sure I just got one from you like two weeks ago.
I was looking to see if it was competitive, it wasn't competitive.
It's good to know I got a few things that I need to have taken care of. Not sure what that chairman's prerogative.
It's nine thirty. Next item is discussed considering entering into a lease agreement with Nebraska International Port of the Plains for property located at eighteen six ten West Highway thirty, Hershey, Nebraska. I think I'm going to ask our counsel to speak to that as he was involved. I can tell you that we presented that a week or two ago to the inland port board. They were in agreement with the exception of one very small item, which we worked out afterwards. And Tyler, would you please elaborate?
Sure. The only difference is now there is a mutual termination provision after sixty days' notice. Prior to that, there was no way for the inland port to terminate the lease. I had used as the basis for this the lease that we have with the chamber for Greenbrier. Obviously, we have absolutely no intention of ever breaking that lease for any reason. So that was a bit of an oversight on my part. Unlike us, the port authority may unfortunately have to break the lease because of income considerations at this point. And so that was built into, well, accommodate their requests, quite frankly. So that is the only difference between the one that this board has already signed and the one in front of you. I believe that is section. Yeah, it'll be section ten point one on page six.
Highly unlikely, but best to get the language right for all parties.
Yes. I'd rather have it baked in now than have to try to figure something out in the event that that should come to pass later.
One question. On the section two point one term of the lease. Shall continue in effect until September twenty-three of twenty twenty-six, or until such time as the parties enter a new lease? Before that date or after that date?
It would be a negotiated renewal before that date. I think the idea, well, at least the idea in me drafting that was sometime between now and two years from now, either we'll own the place, or their financial situation will change such that this lease is no longer sufficient.
Sounds good, thank you.
That's what I recall.
So I entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve and authorize appropriate signatures entering into a lease agreement with the Nebraska International Port of the Plains for property located at eighteen six ten West Highway thirty, Hershey, Nebraska, six nine one zero one.
Second. Motion is a second, any discussion?
So they will sign this at their next meeting?
Yes.
Which is?
It's my understanding.
Which is when?
October.
Margaret?
It would be October twenty-first.
Very good. So until that time, we'll be responsible for all the bills out there?
Unless for some reason they determine they need to have a meeting sooner, that's their next regularly scheduled meeting.
Very good, thank you. The ZIP code for Hershey is six nine one four three, do you wanna?
So do I need to, I'd make an amendment to my motion, fixing the ZIP code to six nine one?
Four three.
Four three. That would be my amendment.
And I would be favorable to that amendment on my second. Okay, so first we'll vote on the amendment?
Technically.
Technically, all the favors say aye.
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 Okay. Back to the original motion, any other discussion? Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Uller? Aye. Hugley?
Aye.
October twenty-eighth is their next meeting, sorry.
October twenty, twenty-eight?
Eight, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I've originally signed up for it, but I'm not sure I will. Nicole, did we have that roads agreement in our packet, you know? I didn't remember saying that, did you have it?
Yeah.
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 We did.
Okay.
George, did you want to look at it?
I probably have it, I'll go and start real quick, just want to make sure nothing's changed.
Looked correct to me.
It's nine forty, the next agenda item is to discuss, consider authorizing the chairman to sign the interlocal agreement for maintenance of roads with the city of North Platte. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Jason Schultsling, County Highway Superintendent.
So this is our annual agreement that the best year in all, if nothing has changed?
Yep, nothing has changed, and yep, this is just the renewal of our interlocal with the city for responsibility roads, so no objections by us, and pretty much same as it's been for the last few years.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so the only question I would have is technically, these are Mr. Chairman, if I may, so the only question I would have is technically these are, there are two interlocal agreements and the agenda item is not plural questioning what we do in this situation.
Another thing, we have a motion to amend the, correct the agenda, councilor. We have one with the city, one with the county, and I think it's just one. That was a good point.
Just want to make sure everything's above board.
Or change it to plural contracts.
Looks like a minor typo.
Yeah. Okay. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve and authorize appropriate signatures. Well, authorize the chairman, it says, to sign the interlocal agreements for maintenance of roads with the city of North Platte.
Second.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
I have a question.
Please, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Jason, is West State Farm Road, is that all of Lincoln County's responsibility?
No. The city has a portion from Highway 83.
To the college?
To Buffalo Bill.
Well, no, there's a county part there. There goes down to, I can't think of the road.
Echo?
It's Echo or Prairie, the entrance into Indian Hills. That's why the county did the bike trail.
Ah, that explains that.
Yes, I was speaking the other way. It's the counties that way.
Yes.
The, from 83.
Probably to Victoria.
To.
Yeah, what would be there?
Is that the?
Victoria Lane?
Yeah. Yep. That's the cities right there across the bridge there.
Not to Newberry, but to Victoria.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's county to Newberry.
I was confused too, so.
No, no, East State Farm Road is from 83 to Newberry.
Right, but that, they're not gonna maintain.
That's county, that's county takes care of that.
I think there's a portion in there from 83 to Victoria Lane where those big satellite dishes are. That's the cities, right?
Yeah, but we take care of it.
We do take care of it.
Because we're on East State Farm Road all the way.
Yeah, per the interlocal, we, we take care of it all the way down. It doesn't make sense to split that up, so.
But West Farm, I'm not, I'm not sure. It isn't stated on here. Because that split, the city's portion is up to the extent of the end of Hall School, and then it turns over to county, I think, from there on west, if I'm not mistaken. Do we, do we grade West State Farm Road over to Buffalo? For snow?
Yes.
I thought we did.
Well, then what, what does the city pick up on that portion of it?
They take care of South Buffalo, very down to that.
Oh, okay.
That's the.
The swap?
The swap.
Okay, I'm with you.
But it's not stated down here about West State Farm Road, but it's my understanding that that is what we take care of.
That was the only question I wanted to make sure this, West State Farm was covered for snow removal, and I was pretty sure we took care of that.
Yep.
Should that be something that's defined in the agreement, Tyler?
Well, ideally, we would want that still in our agreement. It appears to be a longstanding tradition that the parties understand, so.
Where's the dividing line between east and west State Farm? Is it Highway 83? Is it old?
Old Highway 83.
Old Highway 83.
Yeah.
You know, since I, we do appear to have an understanding from in the past, but for next year, it'd be good, maybe Tyler, you get together with your city counterpart and the roads people, and we kind of clarify some of those things. That makes sense? Okay?
It might be just in this language, which is kind of confusing on AB. If all that is locked in.
It might be. I don't know. Just start right there. But I think we've got it, we've got it covered. I entertain a motion. It's made. I made it. Oh, I'm sorry.
In second.
In a second, okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wohler?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
So marching orders for next year, and there we are. Nicole, if you would finish up the rest of those and then my signature. Thank you. Jason, the next item is discuss, consider authorizing the chairman to sign the application number 12 for the Sutherland Bridge project.
Yep, so this is number 12 for that project. It consists of a lot of the landscaping items and some of the striping as well for roadway.
Appears to be in order then. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize, we approve and authorize your signature to sign pay application 12 for the Sutherland Bridge project.
Second. I have a motion and a second. I do have a question. Oh, no, I don't have a question. Sorry. Thank you.
We didn't really have a whole lot of conversation around this table when the bridge actually opened up, but I think it's worth a slight bit of conversation just to give some credit where credit is due to Jason, the entire roads department, our contractors, KIA, constructors, all their subs, to Commissioner Michaela Wohler and Commissioner Jerry Woodruff, who have worked very diligently on the roads committee. There's a lot of people that were involved in this overall project, and I'm very thankful for all the work that's been done and the expeditious manner that it was done, so.
Turned out wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, contractor did agree.
That was my item to speak of under there because since, let's go ahead and have a vote on the payout first. A motion and a second. Roll call.
Brens?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wohler?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
At that item, at that time, I was going to discuss, we have a grand opening next week following, or as a part of this board meeting, so that we, during reconvene up there, have perhaps the school involved, the chamber, make it Sutherland's thing. Have a couple of ceremonial vehicles cross, maybe one, the school bus one way, another individual this way. Have us cut a red button and officially declare it open. We've been discussing that a couple, three, four weeks, so, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Okay, here we go. Tyler, any reason that you know of for a close session? Okay. Here are concerns from elected officials, department heads, and/or their representatives.
Joan, there's a few more places for signatures here.
Okay.
They were stacked on top.
Thank you. All right, committee reports. Anybody have a comment they would like to make about anything? That was my... So Tammy's working on with the schools and stuff like that, so. Time-wise, we haven't discussed it, but I would hope, you know, Tammy was thinking one, but I think if we could do it before that, if we could have a short agenda and maybe do it to 11, say 11:30, so they'd go back in to lunch or something. Thoughts around this table? Matter one way or the other.
Well, the chair controls the agenda, so.
But, you know, I'm open to thoughts.
I think that we probably need to check more so with the school district and get the appropriate people there.
Works for me.
But I'm flexible.
I'm open to anything.
All right, we'll leave it the way it is, Tammy, just whatever works out. Let us know. We'll make our agenda work accordingly. Thank you.
There's just a couple items, I think, on for next week so far, so.
For committee reports, I did attend Nebraska Thriving Communities Conference in Kearney last week. NACO had a section, and I participated in that, but impressive attendance. There was 700 people registered. The banquet the first night, I think 680-some people attended. And just, it gives you a lot of hope to see all of the people and organizations that are working together for children and families and the communities of Nebraska, so it was a great conference. Next week?
Not mentioning names, but I know if Kent were here, we'd probably be through the claims by now, but just.
Duly noted. I'll go slower next time.
I wouldn't have jumped the gun on committee reports and stuff.
We're almost there.
Mr. Chairman, do you need anything from the roads department for budget or do you just come back?
I, I think it would just be good, maybe to just have you stick around doing nothing for... No, I don't, Jason, but I appreciate it less. This board has something. Appreciate you on Brian's time.
North River starts today, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like they'll have some nice weather. They should progress quite a bit this week up there, huh?
Yeah, they're a little delayed getting there.
Oh.
From their, they're on that interstate from where they used to repair right now.
Oh.
So they're, hopefully get in there maybe later this week, so.
Oh, geez, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, I have a communication I'm going to read that I received from Deborah McCarthy, clerk of the district court, just now received it, dated September 23, 2024, Lincoln County Commissioners are e-retirement. This letter is to notify you that I plan on retiring December 31, 2024. I realize that this is before my term has expired. I've enjoyed my career with Lincoln County, but due to personal reasons, I feel this is the best for me as well as my office. I would like to suggest that my current deputy, Crystal Schlipp?
Schlipp.
Schlipp. I'd be appointed to compete, complete my term. She is agreeable, and I am sure that she would be a great official. She's been with, in our office almost seven years now, and I have confidence that she'll bring fresh ideas to the position. Respectfully, Deborah McCarthy, clerk of the district court. So, as you know, it would be the board's responsibility to fill all vacated elected offices prior to them leaving office, with the exception, the only one we don't is that of the county board, that's a three-member panel. So I'm going to, um, give us some thought, put on next week how we would like to proceed with that, okay? All right. Would you note that, please? Thank you.
That's the last thing we're gonna do in the first week.
Yeah, I mean, there's no rush.
Yeah, we got, we got a little time.
Commissioner Woodruff, look at claim 105 detail when it comes around.
Just look at 105. I know I'm not going to.
Nicole? This one does not have a number. Want me to go 108?
Two and a half minutes? Have an hour at least, I suppose. Or a chairman?
Kind of coincides a little bit with the, some work that J.C. Washington, D.C. agreed on.
Oh, shit. A continuing resolution.
Oh, goodness. Things are so broken. I would wonder if it's a major objection to have people who both show up at that location time. I'd like to hear the arguments for that. I'll see it.
Because you, you should watch for brain.
Mr. Chairman, see, who would be opposed to that?
Somebody with ulterior motives.
Who would have this discussion 20 years ago?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on this. Can I make a phone call?
Sure, please.
Did we skip 105?
I haven't come yet. See, if you just drove gas rigs, you wouldn't have that problem, I cannot.
What's that?
If you drove gas rigs, you wouldn't have that problem. You'd just have to go through five of them in the time domain through the diesel.
Are you going to recess in front of them, or...
It's a separate, it's a separate agenda.
Yes.
Don't ask. I've been on that for two years. Much like the closed session, every door should still be in perpetuity. I'm not sure how the law's supposed to work on that, but apparently it does.
This is for the French train that we took over on the new emergency management building, so I had it changed to the, because we have a specific line item just for that project, so I had it changed from the general building thing. Because I take, because I take my time and look at each one.
Would it be, uh, less than if we had, like, a marathon train or whatever?
No, it has to be a French train.
I'd ask.
You know, because the French do things so well.
They do well.
Yes, we'll give them that.
What?
The pastures are good.
Other sports, they have challenges.
We're never going to have to pay for this, right?
Why wouldn't we?
Well, we, we've been borrowing for the last, we've been here.
Ever since, yes.
One of these days, it's going to catch up with us, just.
When you, when you decide to start paying for it, I'll bill you for that 130 truckloads that I donated. I'm serious.
No. No.
I'm serio, no, we did. 130 truckloads of clay.
Oh, got you.
Out of our caving pit.
Oh, I, I, I got you.
From lower school road.
I got you.
That was borrowed, too.
Got you. We got two 104s. Not now.
That must have been when you were harassing me. I missed that.
No comment.
Yeah, there's a 105.
104...
Seven and eight.
104A would be okay.
That's what I did.
Thank you.
The office governor likes them in order, because they have to put them in order for some reason. I think I need to get one back to order here, so it can make this up or not.
I was pretty rowdy.
We're just, we're just about ready to adjourn.
When's the last I've been there?
How was your week, Chris?
It's a busy week.
Okay, I understand Senator's speech. Jacobson spoke. That's your conference.
Yes, he did. I think he was the first speaker of the day, and I was the last speaker of the day, so Lincoln County was well represented. Were you able to...
Probably realized the problem of the man. I don't know.
You always go there. Were you able to make it to the farm viewing thing Saturday night?
No, I didn't, I don't, I was picking up equipment.
We were trapped up.
I had, uh, an expensive trip, so we got into the side of my truck door.
Oh, no.
Okay, any other business come before the Board of Commissioners? Not 10:08, we are adjourned.